Morning everybody and welcome to this special meeting of the Children and Young People's Committee. It is an extra meeting which means that we, for example, have no minutes to look, right? But before we get the meeting underway, if we could do our usual introductions because we are being livestreamed. My name is Martin Grokert, I'm the Member for Lansdowne Ward in Abingavenny and I chair the committee.
My name's Laura Jones, County Councillor for Wysham and Deputy Chair of this committee.
Richard John, Cabinet Member for Children and Young People.
Paula Harris, Scrutiny.
Richard Williams, Democratic Services.
Will McLean, Chief Officer, Children and Young People, Monmouthshire.
Helen Power, Principal Challenge Advisor for Monmouthshire.
Sarah Davis, Principal Challenge Advisor for Blaenigwent.
Mike Fowler, Parent Governor Representative.
Maureen Powell, County Councillor for Castle Ward, Abingavenny, Member of this committee.
Joanne Watkins, County Councillor, Caldecott Castle, Member of this committee.
Morning, Sheila Woodhouse, Member of this committee and Member for Growfield Ward in Abingavenny.
Good morning, Malcolm Lane, Member of this committee and Member for Mardi Ward, thank you.
Well, thank you colleagues. Before we get underway, if I could just say that when we get to Item Six, which is a presentation by Mr. McLean about the Inclusion Review, we'll go into camera for that because we will want to look at some specific details. So just for people looking who might have seen the agenda, when we get to Item Six, livestreaming will be turned off. Okay, moving on then. I know there are at least two declarations of interest and one of them is from me because I am a member of one of the EAS's subcommittees.
And that also applies to me, thank you.
Right, we have some apologies for absence.
Yes Chair, apologies from Councillors Dee Jones, Thomas and Brown.
Okay, so let's get down to the meat of the day then. And Item Three on the agenda, which is started page one in the documentation, which is the Business Plan for the Education Achievement Service for the coming three years.
Okay, so the purpose is to seek members' views on the draft EAS Business Plan. I will focus on the key aspects of the report and be happy to take questions at the end. Okay, so the EAS is required to submit an annual business plan. The plan focuses on an urgent need to raise aspiration, accelerate improvement in pupil outcomes, improve the quality of teaching and leadership and build a self-improving system. The delivery model, although it's on a regional basis, the needs of each school are met within bespoke work. So for each school, advisers will look carefully at those needs and make sure that that is particular for that school. 4.2, the expected outcomes of the plan are noted in the Success Criteria in Section Three of the plan. These are ambitious and progress will be mapped against these. In addition, regional and Monmouthshire pupil level targets and attendance targets are noted in Section Six, which you may already have had a look at. The progress made towards the Business Plan throughout the year is reported then to the Joint Executive Group, JEG, and the EAS Company Board, and that's on a biannual basis. This is also shared with groups, the LA Education Scrutiny Committee and then Welsh Government Officers too. So 4.6, it's important to note that not all actions within the plan can have immediate impact on outcomes. It's also important to note that outcomes can't be attributed just to the work of the consortia, so EAS have to work with partners too. The role of school leaders, governing bodies and holding leaders to account are a key factor obviously in securing improvement. EAS was inspected, as all consortia are, that was in May 2016, and you can see at 4.7 there are the five quality indicators that ESTIN looked at there, all graded good. But ESTIN also then revisit the consortia to see how well the consortia then are making improvements with progress. And EAS are making progress from a baseline of good, so when they visited in September 2017, you can see there the judgements ranging from satisfactory, strong to very good. Moving on to 4.11, the improvements required at regional and LA level will continue to require strong commitment of partnership. And you can see there that by working with departments such as HR, we can make sure that we deliver the best for the schools and ensure then that schools make improvements at the required pace. 4.12, school leaders requiring the most improvement need to fully engage so that we can make sure improvements are made at a rapid pace, that engagement is really significant. Again, EAS will offer support and challenge through the process but can't affect change on a whole level without commitment from each tier. Okay, moving on then to 4.14. Once the final version of the plan is agreed and your views taken into consideration as well, there will be a wide range of supporting documents available, as you can see there in 4.14. Okay, moving to 4.15, there is a list there of the various aspects that really make up the focus for improvement. And we looked at these in the recent Chair of Governors meeting at Raglan School, I recognise some of you from that meeting. And these are the main areas for improvement and they reflect key themes, national and local priorities. So you can see there the focus on vulnerable groups of learners, that comes up time and time again, so FSM, gender, EAL, MA and LAC, so national and local priorities there. Some others there, looking at the quality of leadership, that's always going to be an important priority. And then new developments in education, you may be aware of the new professional standards that are coming in in September 2018 for teachers and leaders and for schools who have had an NQT, that came in in September 2017. So we will be supporting schools in that, in the implementation and the understanding of that. And then preparing schools to meet the new curriculum demands, so a very exciting time for schools, but obviously we'll need some support in that, so successful futures, the work of Donaldson. Okay, so 4.16, working with key partners, we aim to transform the educational outcomes and life chances for all learners. Moving to 4.18, the EAS has invested in building the capacity of schools within the last four years to enable more collaborative ways of working and we see that working very well within authorities and across authorities. And through that then, leaders can learn from each other, try out new approaches and engage then with educational research as a backdrop for all of this improvement. There are a number of well-established networks of professional practice across the region and these will continue to be encouraged as part of the self-improving system. So 4.19, this approach to building capacity, schools taking more of a collective ownership for the development of teaching and leadership has been further developed and that will continue. We will work with the LA Two on any federation models they want to develop. 4.20, targets, you may have had a look at the targets already in your documents, so there was a statutory target setting process in autumn 2017. These for 2018 now are final, targets for 2019 and 2020 remain draft. 4.23 then outlines the LA Annex, which contains an overview of performance and main areas for development. And there is a summary then of overall pupil performance in Monmouthshire, which I'm sure you've had a look at. Okay, moving then to risks, 4.24, there will always be risks to the delivery and realisation of the success criteria of the plan, but at the point the report was written, the EAS feel that can fully deliver this plan. Continued changes in reporting arrangements and performance measures at Key Stage Four continues to present risks to the LA and regional outcomes. The work of the EAS in improving outcomes for vulnerable learners will remain slow unless there is greater engagement of all partners. Okay, moving to 5.2, the EAS has seen funding reductions in areas. There's been a reduction in the EIG, that can affect and be part of the risk. Over the past three years, 5.4, the EAS has been able to contribute to the efficiency savings of councils by reducing the core funding commitment by 3%. And this year, they can offer a 2% efficiency saving for the LA. Okay, I'm happy to take any questions.
Right colleagues, there's an invitation, who's going to get the ball rolling? Perhaps while you're thinking, if I could ask, it seems to me that the local authority has statutory duties and EAS... Sorry, I thought I'd turn that on, thank you Mr. Fowler. It seems to me that the local authority has clear statutory duties and EAS has clear statutory duties. And I wonder if there is any tension between those two? And particularly where it comes to supporting schools that are in the red category, would it for example be easy for a head teacher of such a school to play off, in a sense, the local authority and EAS? How can we be sure that there is a combined, fully effective way of supporting schools in that dangerous area?
Thank you for raising that. I think it's a case of making sure we have good communication with, between the EAS and the LA. I am working with a red school at the moment and it's making sure that all partners are involved, that we engage very carefully with each other, keeping the head teacher and the staff fully informed and part of it so they all feel very engaged.
Thanks, good, sorry, Mrs. McLean.
Thank you Chair, I think just an important point of clarity, I don't, there are no statutory duties on the EAS, all statutory duties remain with the local authority. The EAS is a service that we work in very close partnership with, which clearly we own along with the other authorities in the former Gwent area. And it's in our best interest to make sure that we work very closely with the EAS, to make sure there's a seamless approach to schools that are causing concern and aren't performing at the levels that we would want them to be. So certainly in terms of a red school, where we meet red schools on a regular basis to make assessments as to their progress and so on, that's a meeting that the local authority owns, in terms of that intervention meeting. When we meet schools who are in amber category, that's a meeting that the EAS own in terms of that amber categorisation. All of the powers that are vested in a statutory officer are remain vested in the local authority. So the power to issue statutory notices to schools and so on lies with the local authorities and not with the EAS. That's why it's so important that there is a really strong partnership between the two groups, because if there wasn't to be that strong partnership, I think we would see things falling down. But I'm pleased to say I think there is a great working relationship between the two parties.
Great, thanks for that. You can tell from time to time I'm a newbie on the council, can't you? So thanks for that clarification. Any, yes, Mr. Fowler?
Just a bit of a follow-up from that one, to be honest. Under risks under 4.24, the first one that you highlight is the risk that there is a lack of clarity about respective roles and statutory responsibilities within the LA and the EAS. So it's kind of similar, but I just wonder what lack of clarity you might be referring to and what that risk generally is.
Okay, I think Sarah would like to answer this.
Okay, the risk factors identified here are common across the entire consortia and they don't actually identify one particular local authority and I don't think that actually applies to this local authority.
Counselor Watkins?
Thank you, two points if I may. One in your presentation, you just mentioned supporting the LA in working towards federation models, I wonder if you could give me a little bit of elaboration on that. And the other one is in the full Business Plan, you highlighted training as an area of potential risk and you, in particular, you mentioned training for elected members and elected members serving on a particular body, the EIB. I'm not quite sure what that actually is, the EIB, so please could I have the acronym explained to me? And also could you just explain more about the whole training situation and what the EAS role is in particular with elected members?
If I pick up on the federation, because that's a local authority perspective, and then I'll pass on to Helen and Sarah for the training question. In terms of federation, I think we've arrived at a position, both myself and the executive member, that we know that the future success of our schools will be predicated on them having excellent leadership. At the moment, every school setting we have has got a head teacher. We think in the future that there are models that we would invest in that would mean that we would see shared leadership positions across either partnership of schools or multiple schools, so that's what that's referring to. It's not a unique model in Wales and there are other examples of it having worked successfully, but it's an area whereby myself and Debbie Hartfelt, who's Managing Director of the EAS, had been in discussion about doing some work together about what makes successful federation, what makes successful partnership and shared leadership, so that's why that's cited in the business case.
Any other comments or questions?
Just, okay, just about funding with risks. The EIG is a grant from Welsh Government and that normally has been used by schools and LAs for a lot of training, so that has reduced over the past few years, so that could well be a risk if that continues to reduce in terms then of how much training can be provided. But at the moment, the EAS are looking at other models and that's partly then related to the school improving system where schools are now actually taking on a lot of the training to support other schools. So it's looking at other ways of providing that when the funding is starting to reduce.
Also, the EAS has generated in the past on training models, all training delivered from the EAS as of 2018 will be free to all schools, so there will be no cost. However, EIB, EIG funding has not been agreed for this financial year and we know there is a posp 11% cut. How that will actually translate to schools, it might not be translated down to schools at that level. However, we've made a commitment as an organisation that training will be free to all schools.
My apologies for cutting you off in your prime there. Any further questions, I should now say? Mr. Fowler?
I'm just looking at the progress status against the current Business Plan. What are the classifications, because we're seeing satisfactory and strong there, so what are the, what is the range if you like? And then I'll go and ask further if that's okay.
Okay, the range goes from limited, so limited, satisfactory, strong, then very good being the best.
Okay, so with that in mind, satisfactory is kind of satisfactory, it never seems very, as if we're doing too well, it just feels a bit meh. But to look at it a bit further and just looking at the seven achievements there, the strong progress seems to be very much your business end of education, whereas one to five seem much more in our schools and it seems as if progress isn't as strong as in the school-focused bits of it, as opposed to the business. So just a concern that we're not dragging our schools along as much as the business is moving forward.
Okay, are you referring there to 4.6?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so at the moment, the satisfactory progress, that's our judgement, we would be expecting then, this is as of October 2017, we would be expecting now in the spring term for that to be moving to a greater level.
Sorry Chair, just as well, just to echo Helen's point, the other part is that that's reflecting the business case position for all five authorities. So sometimes, you know, there will be variable performance across the five and that might well mean that there are pockets where schools aren't improving at the same rate or performing at the same rate as others are. So that's the other context which we've got to look at the EAS.
Counselor Powell?
Thank you Chairman. Saying now that it is across the five authorities, is the amount of funding available equal or is it dependent on need? Is it equalled out or is it dependent on need?
There are, I think, two parts to that question. The first part is that the funding that we provide to the EAS, in terms of our core funding, is predicated on the size of the authority and that's established by a formula which is agreed by all of the parties. The next part about need, last time we were together as a committee, I talked informally about the outcomes of the categorisation exercise. The categorisation exercise is what determines the level of support that the EAS deploy to schools. So the more red schools you have, arguably you're receiving a greater level of support from the EAS. So the support the schools receive is in direct correlation to the level of need in the schools as opposed to the amount of money we put in, okay?
Yeah, that's right, you've come up at the end saying the amount of money, that's right. I know they get more support in natural teaching and the business side of it, I was just wondering whether they had that much extra support financially, thank you.
Okay, I wonder just, yeah, my Vice Chair?
Just a quick question on governors, and you sort of noting their performance, are you noting, since you've given, when I first became a governor, perhaps there wasn't as much help as there is now? There seems to be a lot more documents and a lot more on-hand help when you need it. Are you seeing a vast improvement in their role and them speeding things up quicker and things like that?
Yes, I think we are seeing improvements. There is a lot more support now offered for governing bodies and we are seeing now feedback and from the categorisation report. So if you have a look now, there are more green schools now in Monmouthshire and part of that will be where the Challenge Advisor is assessing how well the governors are carrying out their role with self-evaluation, school improvement and their strategic role. So in fact, that says quite a lot in terms of how they're doing and then the impact of the training on them.
I wonder if I could just, oh, sorry...
Can I just pick something up as well? I think it's important for you to note that Monmouthshire's engagement with governor training is probably the best across the region and therefore that's why you have seen this impact.
I should not have interfered with you saying a positive comment like that, should I? Thank you very much for letting us know. In fact, I might ask you to repeat it again. Just one perhaps final question from me, in your areas for improvement, it talks about the performance of those youngsters who might generally be defined as disadvantaged. And free school meals is something that is going to be a recurring theme of the committee this morning, generally I think. And there are statistics there about their performance, but also you quite clearly and positively link in there, English is an additional language, looked after children, I would throw into the pot Syrian refugees for example, and we don't have the same level of statistics for them. Could you tell us perhaps, is there any evidence of the performance of the group who totally might be seen as disadvantaged, so it includes looked after and EAL and so on, as opposed to just the free school meals cohort? How are the rest of disadvantaged kids doing?
Okay, that would vary from school to school and you'd need to look then at the individual data, but I know that there are improvements and that really is from schools working with other schools in clusters. So we have at the moment, you know, collaborative groups working where schools may have a high proportion of free school meal, lack children, and so by working in close collaboration with them, we are seeing some improvements.
Not a huge improvement in free school meals though, if any. That's something we'll come back to later perhaps. Mr. McLean?
Sorry, thank you Chair. We will produce the, all of the group's outcomes, so that will come back to committee at some point in the future. I did see that they were published in a national dataset in the last couple of days, so they will be broken down across each local authority in the coming period.
Okay, colleagues, any further points before we move on? In which case, if I could, thank colleagues from EAS and we have noted the very positive outcome of your recent ESTIN visit and certainly, I think my Vice Chair and I, from our links as members of the ARAC Committee, I find that EAS is an impressive organisation committed to improvement in schools and we thank you for that. So once again, many thanks for your attendance this morning, it's much appreciated. Colleagues, if we could move on to the next agenda item, which is a presentation from our Chief Officer, but before I ask Mr. McLean to do that, if I could just say that over recent days, I know that Mr. McLean has had a lot of additional unplanned work to do and to actually get this report to us today, I think is a case of one of our senior officers going the extra mile. So from the Chair, I would like to thank you very much for being in a position to present this report to us this morning and as a committee, we do appreciate that. So, Mr. McLean?
Thank you Chair, I'll just put it up on the screen if that's okay.
Will, do you need to...
Yeah.
Incidentally, members have been emailed this report this morning, so if you haven't seen it, it should be in your emails.
Good morning. Thank you Chair. It's that time of year, I guess, when it's time for the Chief Officer's report to come around. Hopefully the report, which you all have received this morning, and thank you for the Chair's comments and apologies for its late circulation, there is a lot of information contained within the pack, some of which you will have received already because we've talked about how our children have done at foundation phase through to Key Stage Three and we've had kind of pre-verified Key Stage Four and Five discussions as well and later this morning we'll receive those formally. So perhaps as we go through this, there are some parts which I'll give a lighter touch to than others if that would be okay. Okay, so the purpose of the report is to inform council and it always comes to CYP Select as a precursor to its airing at full council, on the progress that the education system as a whole has made in the last 12 months and the reporting period of the examination outcomes are those which occurred in August 2017. It's not limited only to school-based outcomes, but it's intended to offer a broader perspective about the offer that we give to our children in Monmouthshire. However, where there are concerns around school-based performance, we will identify those. And I just make some note there that for other councillors, that detailed report back to you as CYP Select has happened over the past period as well. I thought it would be useful just to start off with a little bit around the context we're working in and about the changes we're experiencing in the direction we're trying to plot. And I guess to a certain extent, we do face this kind of notion around a perfect storm, I know they're kind of off-repeated phrases, but it does feel like that at the moment. We've got a significant amount of reform within the education system, beyond Wales, we've got a changing economy, changing student needs and so on, which we're trying to address and meet. And even locally, you know, at that level then, we've got significant financial pressures as a local authority and of course, our schools then take that next level of financial kind of contraction as well, as we've got less money that we're able to allocate to schools. But just from the national perspective, I think that point at the moment is that change is ever-present in our education system at the moment. The new Cabinet Secretary has come in, I think she made it very clear that she wanted to articulate a compelling piece around reform and what she was trying to achieve. They've had significant work... They've had significant work undertaken by people like the OECD to try and validate the direction. But just to put it into context, there's a new curriculum being delivered. We've got new initial teacher training. We've got new workforce standards. We've got new leadership standards. They've just created a new National Academy for Education Leadership. There's a new focus on wellbeing and equity in the system. And just if those weren't sufficient for change, we're now looking at changing the way we assess our children, young people. And then beyond that, how we hold the various parts of the education system to account. So there's a huge amount in play at the moment. And actually, we were fortunate enough last week that Professor Tom Crick, who's the Lead for Science and Technology Area of Learning and Experience within the new curriculum, came to speak to a group of head teachers. And, you know, he was saying exactly the same thing, you know, just left academia and just saying, you know, there's a huge amount of change in any single part of the system. There's no consistency, there's change everywhere. Given that, the government has published a document called Education in Wales, Our National Mission. And there's a tension, I think it would be fair to say, around some aspects of what they refer to as the middle tier. And I think the Chair's question in the last agenda item actually picked up some of those tensions that we refer to as well. Because there are different elements to the middle tier, the local authority, the consortia, the General Teaching Council, which is our education workforce body, as it's now called. All of those parts are all part of this middle tier that sits between Welsh Government and schools. So a little bit about what my role is as Chief Officer for Children and the executive member's role in his part for children and people is to actually determine what the local authority's role is for. There's been some interesting work in England done recently about thinking about what that is. So this is from a piece of work that ISOS did in England, thinking about what should the local authority do to actually really maximise the opportunities for children, young people. And I think this is an important point for us to remember. So as we think about what the AS does in terms of their direct interactions around school improvement, around the emergence of a self-improving system, there's a role that the local authority has which is broader. And I think it's really important that we retain that in our minds because there's a broader piece for us to do. I know that you've all had these, so I won't read through the nine there. In terms of Monmasshire, we've spent a little bit of time together, head teachers, myself, senior colleagues within the Directorate, thinking about how we construct what Monmasshire's vision is for children, young people. And this kind of trivial pursuit pie on the left-hand side is our attempt to kind of capture that kind of graphically. So to start at the centre, the child is always at the centre of everything we do, of our considerations and driving our decisions and our activity. And that's really important. And not purposefully, but that kind of pale blue gives a hint at some of the work we're doing at the moment around the United Nations' rights of the child. And I'm really pleased to say that in late March, we've got Sally Holland, who's the Children's Commissioner for Wales, coming to spend the day with us in Monmasshire. The morning will be spent with head teachers and senior leaders talking about what rights-based approach for children is. And then the afternoon will be spent workshops with staff and children, developing different approaches to rights-based work. So I think that's really positive. The next kind of part to this is around excellent teaching and learning. And I think it's a fundamental belief from me certainly, that every child deserves that opportunity to have and experience excellent teaching and learning in whichever setting they are, be that a special needs school, be that an SNRB, a primary school, a secondary school. That's something which we've always got to work to. And I guess that's when this kind of core relationship between us and the AS comes into play. The next ring, as it were, are these eight dimensions of wellbeing. And I'll talk about wellbeing a little bit more later on. But these are eight areas where we think we are now able to begin to develop out a kind of a pattern of provision in terms of our wellbeing offer. I think it's really important, and I was at the CYP Select Committee at the Assembly last couple of months, giving evidence to them. And this notion that you can in some way disassociate academic outcomes and wellbeing, I think is a complete falsehood. They're intrinsically linked, absolutely. If you want your children to do well, then they need to come to school well, they need to be ready to learn, and they need to have a better state of wellbeing than sadly many of our children do. And again, in the construction of this kind of graphic, that sense around wellbeing, supporting the excellent teaching, supporting the child at the centre. So we move on to the outer two rings, the kind of the teal colour, I think that might be, a sustainable future. That's really about the challenges that we face as a Directorate in terms of us being able to make sure that we can pass the necessary funding to schools, that we've got a school system that's in the right place, at the right size, and is kind of going to be sustainable into the future. So much of the work we're doing around BANB and so on fits into that notion of sustainability. And then really kind of embracing the whole piece is this notion around leadership. What does leadership mean? What does it mean for us in CYP? What does it mean as a shared leadership piece with the AS, with our schools, head teachers? There's a huge leadership capacity in Monmasshire. And all of that wraps together around all of the wellbeing agenda and everything else to support the child who's at that centre. So that's the way we're beginning to develop, develop, sorry, and articulate our vision for what we want to achieve in Monmasshire. The other aspect that it's important just to touch on now in terms of context is the 22 for 22. Now, this is the emergent corporate plan. It was considered by Cabinet at their last meeting. It will be considered by full council on Thursday, as far as I'm aware. And I've just drawn out the first three of the 22 for 22, which are directly applicable to CYP. And I think, you know, they provide a really useful framework for us in terms of a corporate dimension, in terms of what's driving us forward. So it's really useful to have that to feed into what we're trying to achieve. We'll come on to touch on those a little bit later on again. So it wouldn't be an annual report if I didn't reflect a little bit on the progress we made about last year's outcomes. So if we just pick those up now, what we said we would do. So there are, I think, eight areas there. Hopefully, you'll see that for the majority, we've achieved them. For some, we're working towards them, so we haven't quite got there as yet. And you'll see that bottom on there, we haven't achieved, and I'll comment on that in greater depth later on. But in terms of attainment at the expected level plus one, we saw increases in that across all of the primary school settings, so foundation phase and key stage two, which is hugely promising. In terms of our mitigation of the new examination requirements, again, our position whilst you'll have heard from me previously and you'll see again shortly, was stand still at 67% level to inclusive. Actually, that was far better than anywhere else in Wales in terms of our preparedness for the new examinations. We have concluded the independent review of ALN and inclusion across the county, and I'll be feeding back to you that later this morning. In terms of how we tackle ACES, which is the initials for Adverse Childhood Experiences, that's something which we continue to work on. It's an area which, as you can imagine, is huge. That includes everything from mental health to parental separation to drug and alcohol misuse, all, a whole range of things that children can experience. So that's something which we're working towards, although we've made good progress to that. Again, similarly with the tackling childhood obesity, really positive work with partners and so on, but again, something we're working towards, obviously. Cluster work across geographical areas and age, we've got some nice examples which we've been able to undertake with support from Welsh Government, it must be said, around things like shared business managers across clusters. For instance, in King Henry and the Aberguvenny cluster, they've got a shared business manager. Equally, in the south of the county in Caldercot, they've got a shared NQT resource to mitigate some of the needs for supply costs and so on. So we're beginning to see the development of an infrastructure, which I guess relates a little bit to some of the questions you were asking around federation and sharing resources in the back office, councillor Watkins. We are working, and we have a number of schools which are pioneer schools, and they're working towards the construction of the new curriculum. But clearly, we've had to say that that's ongoing because that will happen in the future now and the schools are preparing for the rollout of Donaldson. And it's the full implementation and the expectations that go with it. And the one which we haven't had the impact on that I would like to have seen would be to work with our schools to reduce the number of exclusions. There are some very, very challenging behaviours presenting in our schools at the moment. And head teachers absolutely rightly have a line which they hold. And sometimes when pupils transcend that line, it's right that they're excluded from school. However, I think we do need to look more broadly about how we can actually think about reducing that in the future. So I'll come on to talk about that a little bit later. The first area which I wanted to touch on though, with this kind of broader view, is around safeguarding and wellbeing. And I'll start with the safeguarding, if that's okay. So safeguarding, hopefully you'll recognise the diagram on the left-hand side. That's the structure that we hold our self-evaluation in, in terms of safeguarding. And that was what you had presented to you at various meetings in preparation for the recent visit by the Wales Audit Office, Estin and CIW. A commentary on the right-hand side is, you know, you'd expect, hopefully, that, you know, key concern for us in CYP. I think it's important, I think, for all council and councillors to recognise, I think, the sheer breadth of activity that safeguarding is relevant to. So on the one hand, safeguarding can be making sure that a gate is locked and secure. At the other end, it can be an urgent child protection referral. At the other end, of a kind of three-way spectrum now, it could be a prevent referral. There's any number of things that safeguarding can take part. And it goes from what you might consider to be very mundane kind of common sense health and safety measures to much more specific professional measures at the other end. CYP is a fundamental part of the whole authority safeguarding group and a key part of the governance that works within the organisation. We've got a dedicated officer who works across all of our schools in terms of promoting and is acting as a real kind of barometer and check in terms of where safeguarding is. Every two years, all of our schools complete a safeguarding self-evaluation, which we refer to as the SAFE. And then that comes back into the local authority and we challenge and assess that, look for patterns of areas of deficiency and so on. When Estin go out to schools to undertake their inspections, they obviously have a duty to inspect and make consideration of safeguarding in our schools. In the past, I think probably 18 months since I've been in post, I think we've had four letters from Estin. Two were regarding non-maintained early year settings. The first one was a lock on a gate, which was rectified very quickly. The second one, it was a joint inspection and they were concerned with standing water accumulating at the bottom of a tyre which was being played with in the playground. So a drill under tyre soon resolved that, so that one was undertaken. And that was fine. The two others, we had an issue in Ascol Ewenni in terms of provision of car parking and the way that buses were accessing the car park. That's been resolved now and is correct. And then the final one, we did have a letter with regards to Mountain House and the way that certain things were done in Mountain House. We've responded to that within the timescale and I think we're content that the school has taken the necessary measures that it needed to. I think one point and the final point there is that it's really important with regards to safeguarding, that you never think that it's okay, that you're always learning. And we've had an example certainly this year whereby it's a strong partnership as opposed to a string partnership in that last paragraph. But we discovered that a series of assumptions that we had from earlier testing about the way that volunteers were recruited into schools weren't as robust as we would have hoped. So over a significantly intense period of time, we now have a complete register of every volunteer in every school in Monmasshire. We know what they're volunteering in, we know their DBS number, we've got two references for them, they've had level one safeguarding training or they're booked on safeguarding training. If needs be, they've had an occupational health assessment. So we're very clear about the risks that they present potentially to our children. And I think that's a significant step forward. And I think it's come about and many of you will be aware of the work that we've undertaken in response to Kerb Craft. But it's come about from that and I think we're in a much stronger position in terms of that now. So that sense about always learning, always recognising that there's room for improvement is borne out well there. With regards to wellbeing, and the wheel probably isn't quite as clear as I would have hoped on the left-hand side. But just in terms of commentary, young people's wellbeing is a key focus within the Wellbeing Plan, which is the document which is owned by the Public Service Board. And one of their four key aims is to give every young person the best start in life. The wheel, which came about from some research we did and is based on an American university model, really allows us to map our interventions and begin to come to a position whereby we understand the impact and the benefit that those interventions are happening on families and their children. We know, as I said earlier, that wellbeing has a direct impact on how children do in school. That's why it's so important. And, you know, preparing young children and older children for their life and adult life as well, all depending upon their wellbeing is crucial. If I just run round the eight before I go on, the dark blue at kind of one o'clock is safety and security. It moves on then to relationships, through to mental health, cognitive health, physical health. Purpose is at kind of eight o'clock, community and the environment. So those are the eight areas in which we've got activities taking place. We're working very closely with our colleagues in social services, Charlotte Drury's Early Help team, working very closely with to make sure we've got early intervention in place to actually not need those more acute services later on. And that's really developing and we've got a new Strategic Children and Young People's Partnership, which is chaired by one of our secondary heads, which I think is a really positive piece. And we're beginning to see new initiatives developed within our schools. So things like the LSA's, which are emotional literacy support assistants, are now being trained by our own educational psychologists to work in school. And I've certainly seen firsthand the benefit of that work with children who are highly vulnerable from contextual challenges that they have. And actually, the work that the LSA's do is quite brilliant in terms of them. Okay. One thing which I think is important to note, and you see it now just appearing at the bottom in the green there, it's not just wellbeing of the children, young people in our system that I'm concerned about, it's wellbeing of the staff in our schools, in our Directorate. All of that is a really critical part. I think, you know, we've seen recent innovations such as the workload agreement, which Estin and the Cabinet Secretary have announced and so on. I think there's a very clear understanding that at the moment, it's a highly pressurised system to work within. Children are becoming more challenging. The onus, the expectation of improved outcomes is ever-present. So I think we do really need to be conscious about the wellbeing of our staff. The other part is, if your staff aren't well, then they won't teach as well as we want for our children. So I think that ring in terms of supporting the excellence, teaching and learning can just as well be supporting the teachers as well. Okay, I'm going to move on to school performance now. I won't go through this slide by slide because I think you'll have heard much of this from me. And there's other parts which you will hear again. But there are some areas which I just want to go into with a little bit more detail and a bit more depth. The first part is that the assessment that we come to in this presentation is around a view which is formed from three different perspectives. So we're not just looking at outcomes and saying, yeah, our outcomes are great, that's all fine. Equally, we're not just looking at Estin and saying, well, Estin say we're good, so that's all right. Or don't say we're good, equally. And finally, we're not just using categorisation, we're trying to kind of triangulate the three different perspectives that we have on our school's performance. But hopefully, the next slide, which I don't think I've shared with you previously, I think does, will give you a flavour in terms of where the system is, where it's been performing over the past period and kind of the scope for improvement. So the block of, on the left-hand side is the foundation phase, on the next and across is key stage two, key stage three. And then on the right-hand side is key stage four, level two inclusive. So the blocks represent our kind of percentage outcome at the expected level. So you can see there on the foundation phase, you know, we've started just at about 90% and we've always been around there with a step up this year. The red bar above that is the position that we've come in Wales. If we were to rank our performance in Wales, so you can see there that for four out of the five years on the foundation phase, we've been the top performing authority in Wales. And in one year, we dipped to second place. Moving on to key stage two, you can see there quite clearly, again, comparatively to foundation phase, a high level of performance. And for three of the last five years, we've been top performing. This year, we've fallen back slightly to second place. Key stage three, which is the third block across, you know, when, I think when we had the Estin period and the Estin visit, you could see that in 1213... the ESTIN period and the ESTIN visit, you could see that in twelve thirteen really poor outcomes in terms of our expectations, so we were kind of sixth in Wales. Bearing in mind, we're normally one or two in terms of our entitlement to free school meals. You know, we should normally be one or two in terms of the outcome. And we've seen significant improvement in terms of our key stage three, and that's down to schools really focusing on that. And I think importantly as well, and Sarah having been one of our primary school heads in the past, a recognition that the the move from key stage two into key stage three, how important that was. And the shared work that secondaries and primaries do in their clusters to recognise that. Key stage four. Again, you know, I know that there are frustrations about us not being able to seemingly break the seventy percent kind of cap and we've been around sixty eight point nine or sixty seven, or sorry, sixty six point nine or sixty seven for those last three years. But you can see there that we had a significant step in performance from twelve thirteen to thirteen fourteen. And we've maintained that. And we've had three out of the last five years as the top performing authority in Wales. It should be said at this stage, even around key stage four, that with regards to key stage four, it's very difficult to compare sixteen seventeen outcomes to fifteen sixteen. And that will be more detail later on in the paper, which we consider around key stage four and five. So much of these I've shared with you previously, so I won't go through these now, but foundation phase, this ranks us left to right in terms of F S M entitlement. The next slide, and this is this is a pattern of slides that's repeated on each of the key stages, so you'll hopefully become used to that pattern. So that's overall outcomes. We then look at specific indicator movements compared to our target, compared to last year and compared to the Welsh position in twenty seventeen. You can see the points I made around improvements at the expected level plus one, so the bottom table there is outcome six plus. And you can see that for English, for Welsh and for personal social development, we all saw increases. There's a downward arrow there, I think that came through from the E A S's report as well. I think we actually stood still from sixteen to seventeen. So, you know, across the board there, that's a a strong performance. We then offer a national perspective in terms of where we are comparatively. And then some detail for you with regard to the gender gap, to the regard to F S M performance. And then finally, some broader conclusions around where we are at the foundation phase. So it's probably worthwhile just dwelling on that conclusions. And I think it's really important to note that the foundation phase framework has been revised and that schools are working hard to to make sure that that's been implemented properly. And I think the higher level outcome with forty seven percent of learners achieving outcome six plus is an unbelievable strength for us as a as an organisation and as and a county of children. We've also seen the gender gap close at the foundation phase indicator. And that's about, in truth, bringing boys attainment up, and that's been important to us. And we've also seen targeted interventions mean that F S M pupils have improved their performance as well. One thing to note for the committee, because when I'm sat here next year, well, hopefully I'll be sat here next year. And, well, it depends on how the foundation phase outcomes goes, we're expecting a more challenging set of outcomes next year in terms of the foundation phase, they're changing the way in which they'll be assessed. So we're looking for some differentiation there, but we'll continue to report on that through the year. We'll move on to key stage two if that's okay. We'll follow exactly the same pattern, so you can see there our position at ninety three point two. You'll also see again the indicator movements and again at that important level five that I referred to earlier in terms of the things we said we do. You can see improvement in English, Welsh first language, mathematics and science, all at the expected level plus one. When I've spoken to head teachers about the challenge that we face, I think rightly, many head teachers have pushed back and said, you know, you have to recognise, you can't keep improving year on year on year when you're achieving at a course subject indicator in excess of ninety percent. There will inevitably be children in a class who might not ever be able to get to a course subject at the expected level. So in recognising that, I think that's why the focus on the expected level plus one has been so clear. But you can see in the expected level that we've fallen in each of those areas this year. We've exceeded targets across the board, but we haven't actually made the performance. But that again, recognising that we've exceeded targets is about our schools knowing their children really well and targeting effectively. So we move on to the national perspective, that picks up some of the the key information is there for you to to read. Again, the gender gap and the F S M gap. And I think that's important. But again, if we just get to those conclusions, we've seen consistent improvement over time. However, in twenty seventeen, we have seen at the expected level this slight fallback. And we have seen a significant fallback in terms of Welsh language and so our Welsh language schools haven't performed as well. And you can see there in terms of the, oh, I'm going the wrong way, sorry. In terms of the indicator movement, you can see there that they were down quite substantially from ninety five point one at the expected level down to eighty six point eight, so quite a significant fall. But, you know, that's an area whereby we only have two schools, so there's going to be more volatility in that cohort than there would be in the the rest of the cohort. We've seen a closure of boys and girls' performance at key stage two. And the performance of F S M learners is improving overall because of the greater kind of tracking processes that we have in place in our schools now. So we know who our F S M learners are, we identify them very early, we put interventions in place for them. And that's allowed their performance to improve more quickly than the non F S M cohort. So continuing focus on level five plus and, you know, this real stretch into level six plus. And I think there's been some really nice examples whereby, again, close working between primaries and secondaries has allowed us to demonstrate children achieving level six. So level six, just to put it in perspective, is a level higher than we expect our children to achieve in year nine. So at the end of primary school there, we do have children who are achieving that level. And for one of our schools, I was visiting in Alberguevenny, they were talking about, they had a group of boys actually, who were remarkably strong in maths. And the classroom teacher was, I think they might be a level six, but I'm not sure, I've never really seen level six in the classroom before, but they've got a an arrangement with King Henry that the King Henry Head of Maths comes out into the primary schools in that cluster. And he was able to sit down with the classroom teacher and say, these are clearly level six attainment. These children are clearly working at that level. So then that will enable them to have differentiated work as soon as they arrive in King Henry, so we don't have that dip in performance that sometimes you can at that point of transition. So I think there are some really positives there. Move on to key stage three. As you've seen, this is the one which we've seen that real step in performance over the the past period. Again, on the left hand side, us as the lowest entitlement of F S M and at ninety two point seven. This time again, you'll see in terms of the expected level plus one, which is level six. You can see there that in maths and in science, we've improved and we've fallen back slightly expected level plus one in English. And we didn't make our, we exceeded our target, but we didn't make last year's position. But beyond that, level seven, which is, we're really now looking at very strong indications of very good G C S E outcomes. We're looking at improvement in English, in maths and in science across the board. So I think that's really, really positive in terms of key stage three. In terms of the national perspective, you can see there that it's been a strong year for us in twenty seventeen. We've moved up to second place in the core subject indicator overall. We've held second place in English, we've moved up to second place in maths and up to first place in science. And again, following the pattern of the previous two key stages, there's a commentary there around gender. Key stage three is that kind of we move into secondary phase and we begin to see the divergence both in gender and in F S N. Which is a real challenge for us. Although it's important to note there, that first paragraph on the right hand side around the F S M, the attainment gap is at its narrowest on the core subject indicator since twenty fourteen at eighteen point eight percent. And that's due to the rising scores of F S M pupils and a smaller increase by non F S M pupils. So that's what you want to see, you don't want to see gaps closed by your non F S M performing worse. You want to see your F S M performance increase. So in terms of the conclusions, a five year trend in performance increasing at level five plus. But it's really, going back to those tables I've just been talking to, it's the gains at level six plus and eleven seven plus that we're really focusing on and making sure that we're achieving those, because that's where you see that traceability through to those very, very strong outcomes at G C S E. Increasingly, we're looking at our schools to review their key stage three provision. There's work across the A S looking at key stage three reviews. One of the reasons for that is obviously that as Donaldson and Successful Futures is implemented in our schools, we'll see key stage three is the first part that has to reflect that new that new way of teaching, which isn't subject based, which is thematic. So I think that's going to be a real challenge for our schools. But it's going to be a challenge for all schools, not just for our schools. We'll move on to key stage four. Twenty seventeen saw the first tranche of new examinations and some of this will duplicate the report we've got a little bit later on. So I'll I'll try and go to the bits which I think are slightly different. So twenty seventeen, first tranche of new examinations and accountability measures was introduced. English language replaced English literature as the English examination that was counted within the level two plus. A new maths paper was sat, numeracy was introduced. Numeracy or maths count towards your level two plus, the best when you score in, but you have to do both. So you can't choose to do one or the other. Vocational qualifications or equivalences, as they're known, can now only make up forty percent of the level two plus. So that was a diminution for some authorities and for some schools where they'd relied heavily on vocational qualifications and their equivalent value to get children to the level two inclusive. That was an impact on them. And the the new examinations were linear, and I think that's really important. So they went back to maybe much more akin to the examinations, I guess, that I sat, whereby you did two years of work and you sat an exam at the end. The key point around that is that there's less opportunity for schools to support children through modular examinations and through coursework through that process. So it's much more dependent upon how you achieve on the day at the end. I'm going to move through the next set of slides quite quickly. This is a pattern that you'll see throughout the report. So on the left hand side is our trajectory over time. These are direct lifts from the All Wales Core dataset and the presentation that you can see there is that they've recognised that it's the same indicator, but because of that differential in key stage four, you'll see that dotted line and not the link back in, so they're not comparing like with like, but the same indicator. Really importantly, the middle block then is what we call our heat maps. When schools want to compare their performance, they compare themselves to schools which are similar in terms of their free school meal entitlement. It can have a real impact on you in terms of your kind of position. So you'll see Monmasheer is at the top there. We had two schools in the highest quartile, one in the next one, so above the median, the second quartile and one in the third quartile. For this year, Caldercot is the school which is below the median and in that lower middle quartile. But this is a, it's a bit of a tough year for Caldercot, it would be fair to say. So we had new examinations, they moved into the top comparative group, so those schools between naught and ten percent. So they're suddenly comparing themselves with a different group of schools altogether. And added to that as well, Caldercot has a special needs resource base, which means that they also have a group of children, probably say about ten or twelve children in every year, who are actually with special needs. So are not very likely to ever get to a level two inclusive position, so that's why Caldercot find themselves there. So very strong performance from two of our schools in terms of Monmouth and Chepstow. King Henry above the median, which is exactly where we like to see them, and as I said, just for those reasons, Caldercot below. Again, these repeat and pattern so that hopefully the analysis is easier. You can see on the left hand side now, our average position is the green bar and then the range bars pick up our highest and lowest performing schools. So we want to see the green bar as high as we can and the black bar as as small as it can be. We've got a wider variance this year than we did last year. So all pupils, the range is between sixty two and seventy four. On the left hand side, on the right hand side, sorry, again, you can see this piece which is around F S M pupils. So you can see there that we've got a smalling, a falling number of pupils, percentage of pupils who are achieving level two plus if they're entitled to free school meals. So that's disappointing to note. But then you can see there's a really, really significant range from forty percent to ten percent, depending on which school you're in. So there's a whole set of real challenges around that F S M performance, and that's one of the areas which I will pick up later. Just pick up, there's one on gender there. So you can just, again, we'll pick this up in the the paper which we receive later. So I think I'll move over the gender and just look at the F S M differential. Challenging for us, highly challenging outcome in terms of where we are as an organisation. Highly challenging as well for colleagues in the A S in terms of the interventions they're putting in place. Helen and I were at a an education improvement board last night at one of our secondary schools. And even still, you know, it was it was positive to hear the work that the school's doing to improve the F S M outcomes. But even then, to hear them talk around teachers having a almost a a lower level of expectation of children who are in receipt of free school meals still was frustrating. So I think there's something around across the whole system about us raising expectation. And that's for all, not just for head teachers. That clearly applies for every classroom teacher to really believe that every child who sits in front of them, no matter what their background, will be able to achieve the best that they can. And that's really important for us. I'm not sure if anyone here was at the session we had in King Henry recently around wellbeing, but we had a presentation from Cardiff University there. And they were talking about the fact that disadvantaged students are additionally disadvantaged if they attend schools where they are part of a small group. So disadvantaged pupils who attend a school where they are, where there is widespread disadvantage perform better than disadvantaged students who attend a school where there is a greater backdrop of affluence. I think it was referred to as the frog pond effect. And often a consequence of that is teachers have a kind of a default middle class value set, which is impeding then the the young people's learning. So that was really interesting to hear that from the researchers from Cardiff University in that session. So a key area for concern for us and I'll talk about that in more detail in a little while. Level two, this is five good G C S Es and I won't go through these in the same detail, but this is there for you. You can see that we've fallen off less than the rest of Wales, but we've fallen significantly in terms of our level two. And again, you can see the variability in terms of our performance. In terms of variability performance, it's tighter this year than it was last year, which is positive, but overall the drop has been quite clear on the left hand side. And again, that range is really significant in terms of the the F S M pupils. I think one thing just to say, and we'll come on to look at some schools individually in a little while. There was no pattern this year across the four schools. There was no pattern, so King Henry didn't do as well at level two in plus as other schools, but they did much better at level two and level one. So there was no way you could say that school has had a bad year, because depending which indicator you chose to look at, there was a real mixed picture and a real basket. Level one, exactly the same pattern, so I'll leave this for you to to read and you'll pick these up. And again, just a couple of extra ones here, CAP nine will become increasingly important. Next year, CAP nine will be the core measure that we use alongside level two inclusive. And I think in the future, we will see the Welsh Government developer an accountability framework, which is broadly CAP nine, CAP nine with a core, that type of measure. So it's going to be one which we've really got to work on. The importance around CAP nine is about keeping the breadth of the curriculum for children, because you're capping at nine G C S Es. One just to note, a really positive story for us. Number of children achieving five A star or A grades, you can see there really significant step up. Twenty four point four percent of our pupils achieved that, which I think is outstanding. We're the second highest in Wales and the the rate of improvement in that indicator was faster than the rest of Wales for the second year running, so we're moving away from Wales in that. The next couple of slides I'm going to show you are premised on a statistical model. I was talking to to my wife about this on the weekend and the the pictures look quite stark, but then there's probably a narrative I have to put around them as well, but I'll just begin this. So modelled expectations, so Welsh Government provide us and provides schools with an expectation of what their pupils will achieve at key stage four. It's predicated on what their outcomes were at the end of key stage two. So we have very, very high outcomes at the end of key stage two, as we've just seen. So there are a range of different statistical models which are applied, but the key ones are model one, which is simply a linear extension of their outcomes at key stage two. So you simply say that a normal child will achieve X number of levels of improvement in that period of time. So if they achieve that at key stage two, they will therefore achieve that at key stage four. Model two B adds into that gender, age, where you live, the social democratic or The social democratic or socio-economic nature of where you live as well and comes up with a higher kind of estimation. So it takes into account your birth point in the year. So if you're born early in the year, then that's a factor which is increasing the likelihood of you achieving a better grade. So you can see there, so these are the same for all four schools. So on the left hand side, you see Caldercot, level one, the amber bar is the expectation of model um one. The green bar is model two B and the red bar is what was actually achieved. Is that, yeah? So you can see there that for Caldercot, they didn't achieve any of their model expectations at level one, level two or level two inclusive. And this has been a pattern that we've seen across Monmouthshire for the past number of years. Um, model two B is a challenging target to set for a school. And in fact, this year's um outcomes, I think the A S is saying that, I think we're, we've seen a, a drop in the model two B. That doesn't look as if the model has been as severe, which is interesting. Um, because the other thing is, is that this is a measure of progress. So this is one which Estin will come to use to judge us on as well. So you can see Chepstow um just about made the model one at level one, but didn't make the model two B. Um, and just have made the model one in terms of the level two inclusive. Um, but didn't make the model two B and will come some considerable way off the level two there. And exactly the same model for um King Henry and for Monmouth there. So it's an important part for us to be aware of. And it's important for, for you as a committee to understand what a model expectation is. And what it means to our schools and how they are used to, to hold schools to account. I think it's been clear from the conversation that we've had this morning that, uh, you know, F S M remains a critical challenge for us. Um, that's a little lift from the BBC website um back in uh November. Um, which cited um our gap um in F S M attainment at key stage four. Um, interestingly, the, the fuller report on social mobility identified Monmouthshire as being the third best in the uh. In Wales in terms of social mobility behind the Vale and Keridigian, when you took into account outcomes at younger ages and so on. And some business factors and so on, but it was clearly very stark that at key stage four last year, so the sixteen outcomes were poor. And we know, you know, from disclosures that we've made to this committee, that they didn't improve last year either. So this is just a piece of work which we've done just to, to really highlight the challenge really. So you can see on the left hand side, this is the gap between F S M and non-F S M, so the two cohorts separated. So not F S M and all pupils, where there's a, can be some confusion sometimes. This is F S M, non-F S M over three years and you can see the gap closing there. So it's at a relatively small amount in terms of twenty seventeen. Again, key stage two, you can see that gap relatively consistent. Um, it's about ten percent, just under ten percent in twenty seventeen. And looks like it's been around that for the previous two years as well. When we move on to key stage three and four, you begin to see it open. In fairness, at key stage three, over the past three years, it has closed. But at key stage four, you see we've really not been able to break this cycle here. So the right hand side there, you can see that level of variability and you can see. It's the falling F S M performance as opposed to an increasing non-F S M performance that has led to that gap increasing. So just a little bit um more detail um and. Uh, around the, the individual secondary schools, because this is just about us making sure that we apply that lens to the, to the right level. Um, so level two plus in Caldercot, you can see there a rising picture of performance, um, which I think is really positive. Um, and they had forty percent, six of their fifteen pupils achieved level two inclusive. Um, Chepstow thirty-eight point five percent, again, you know, relatively strong performance in terms of their F S M. And a significant step up from twenty sixteen where they'd fallen right back from their twenty fifteen position. I think the next one is potentially the most stark, um, and again, low numbers kind of exacerbate kind of percentages. But you can see that King Henry fell from um forty-four point four percent um in twenty sixteen. To only one in ten or ten percent achieving in um, in twenty seventeen. That was down to a specific subject, there was, um, that's around English. So when we go back another layer to look at what led to that, there was um an issue in the English department last year. And if we were to look across the piece, you'd see that English was the area that dragged King Henry's level two plus down last year as well. Um, Monmouth relatively static, although you can see that they are on a, a four-year declining trend. So again, that's something which we're talking to them about. And I think again, though, places like Monmouth, this sense around being deprived children in a very affluent school. Will be a factor that we just need to think about. But we are working very closely with the secondary heads, with the A S to make sure we understand that. Um, and make sure that they improve in the future. There are people sometimes put forward arguments around the volatility of small cohorts. Um, but equally and rightly, people push back and say, you know, with only sixty children potentially in your year eleven cohort. We should probably know every single one by name and understand exactly where they are and what they're doing. And I think, you know, we saw a demonstration last night in one of our secondary schools whereby they know exactly who the children are. They know exactly which of their English maths is secured. They know um what they need for additional targeted uh interventions on the one they haven't got yet. Or whether it's the other three they need to focus on, so all of that. So I'm, I'm confident that our schools have the systems in place. We just need to see that translate into a better outcome this summer for our F S M. There's also the piece which I alluded to earlier about the change in the examinations and across Wales, we saw a significant fall away. In terms of the F S M outcomes this summer, uh, twenty seventeen and other authorities have been. I think quicker than we have to say that that was due to um the change in the examination structure. Just moving on to um schools categorisation, um. I think, you know, you can see by that pictorial reference there, really strong in terms of the development of green schools. Um, I alluded to that last time we were together. Um, our focus now is making sure that any schools who seem to be dwelling in the yellow for too long. Um, get some additional sport, support to really move them on up into green. But I think as I alluded to last time as well, I think although it looks like a, like a homogenous block of green on that right hand side. There are definitely shades of green within it and I think we need to make sure that we are securing stronger green schools as well. So once you become green, you maintain that into the future. Uh, note at the bottom there, um, we do still have two stubborn red schools. We've had this volatility of the two schools kind of going between red and amber over the last period. Um, significant work in both Mega and Clantilio Pofoli to move them both forward uh and out of the red category. Um, the third point of triangulation is around Estin outcomes. Um, this is um overall, um, from the last three years, I think this is drawn from. Um, in terms of Estin outcomes, I don't know, this must, this must be the entire previous cycle. Um, and this is on the old framework and in the old framework, they had, they gave schools two judgements. So current performance and prospects for improvement and then judgements on um standards. Provision and leadership. Um, so this is how it looks, on the left hand side is Monmouthshire and on the right hand side is the comparative piece for Wales. There are some significant positives, um, so we see far less red on the Monmouth side. Um, than we do on the Wales overall side, but I'm sure all of you will have recognised that there's no excellence. Um, on the Monmouthshire side, whereas there is um across all of them on the, the Wales overall perspective. That's a key concern for us, um, it's a key concern for Estin when they come and talk to us. So that's an area that we're looking at very closely. Um, I've just mentioned the old Estin framework. Estin have a new framework which was rolled out um as of September, um, so the current academic year. Um, it's providing a very different challenge to our schools. Um, and I think that would be fair to say, and I hope colleagues agree that that's obviously the case across the A S as well. Um, we've seen secondary schools who we thought um in a regional setting were doing okay, suddenly go into special measures and so on. So that's been a real challenge. Um, it's different, it looks at five areas now, so we don't have key questions, we now have inspection areas. And they are standards, wellbeing and attitudes to learning, teaching and learning experiences, care, support and guidance and leadership and management. Um, we've had three schools inspected under this framework, two primaries and a secondary. And it's been a really important learning experience for us to go through that, to actually understand what it means. There's a change in the methodology that the inspectors use, so they're much more likely to talk to children. They talk to other teachers, uh, importantly, so the ability of a head to manage a process um has been um reduced. So it's a real part for us that we, we actually develop that and um. Helen and one of her other colleagues, the P C A in Caerphilly are running um a session for all of our primary heads. Around being ready and prepared for Estin. The other part around the new uh framework is that it's not on a cyclical programme basis anymore. Uh, it seems a little bit more haphazard in terms of who they choose when they inspect. So um, that's just something we've just got to have an eye to. Okay, I'm conscious of the time, so I'll push on. Um, the next block of uh slides around attendance and inclusion. Um, we'll start with the bad news um in terms of exclusions. I'm sorry the type is so small, but you should be able to read it on the, the, the copies which you've got. There's lots of detail in there and uh that's down to us having uh Richard Austin, who's unbelievably good at. Managing the data and being able to explain to many decimal points why things have happened. Um, but the bottom line is that um when Estin came in twelve thirteen, they were very clear that we had too much. Too many days were lost to exclusions. Um, so you can see there that we saw in twelve thirteen, which was the following year, a decline. We then had a little increase again in terms of the primaries, but then a decline again. But we've seen over the last period, in three of the four years, increases in terms of the level of fixed terms exclusions in our schools. Which is not what we want to see. Um, and again, in secondary, we're seeing an increase there as well. Now, when I speak to the head teachers about it, as I said earlier, you know, they don't want to exclude. I've never met a head teacher who wants to exclude a child. Um, but there are levels of behaviour presenting in our schools at the moment which are exceptionally challenging. Um, as an example, it's not cited on the, um, it's in the narrative, but it's not on the table. You know, we've had a little boy um in foundation phase permanently excluded twice, you know, for behaviour and it's, it's incredible, you know. At that age, it's very difficult to say, you know, what the driving factor is, is there a medical diagnosis that sits behind that? Is it um contextual or familial um experiences which are driving that? It's very, very difficult for us to understand that. Um, I think we're going to invest um as an authority in some behaviour management work across all of our schools. A different approach which will hopefully begin to see us manage these exclusions more effectively. The one thing that, and I won't go through it now, but in the narrative on the right hand side, what Richard has done is to disaggregate. Some kind of persistent offenders, which is um probably a fair thing to do. Because you can end up in a situation whereby you can have one or two, a handful of individuals. Who are causing a distortion of those figures and if you were to discount those, then they actually come back to a more acceptable level. But I'm absolutely clear that that's not an excuse and it's an area that we really must focus our work on in the next year. Attendance are really strong um in terms of our attendance at both primary and secondary. Um, these graphs, uh, these tables, um, not only cite Monmouthshire's performance and the Wales average. But we also identify our nearest statistical neighbours, Powys, Keridigian, Pembrokeshire and the Vale of Glamorgan. And you can see there that our performance um is very, very good um compared to all of those. We were top performing um authority in terms of primary school attendance at ninety-five point six. I think that's pretty exceptional, I'm not quite sure how much more we'll get out of the schools in terms of attendance. Um, so really, really positive in terms of um our primary attendance. As well as that, in terms of our secondary, we were second in Wales this year, just gone twenty sixteen. Um, there might be a little bit, if we were to disaggregate some of the impact of Mountain House and the special school. Um, where there are some specific issues around attendance there, then we'd have been at ninety-five point one. Again, for a secondary school, fantastic outcome in terms of our countywide and really, really impressive, I think. As we're getting to the conclusion now, um, and I think the next couple of slides. Pick up on some of the risks which we're experiencing, um, and they have a mirror opportunity always. Um, but we also look at um some of the areas um which um are, will be our areas for focus um in the next year as well. So in terms of risks and opportunities, um, I've kind of grouped them under four blocks here. There's probably more work to be done here and uh I think that's the positive thing about being able to bring the report to C Y P Select first. And that allows me to test out some of the thinking which has gone into it. But the risks and opportunity are focused around A L N, school reform and development, financial pressures. And then a group which I've lazily called broader areas. And um, it's important that um we just kind of understand that there are significant risks for us at the moment as a local authority. Um, there are significant risks that face our schools as well. So in terms of the A L N, there's a, depending on the outcome of the consultation process. Um, there will be a whole hugely significant piece of risk manage, of change management we have to put in place to achieve that. Um, there remain significant risks to the volatility of the A L N budget. Because, you know, children will present, um, family situations will change, children will move into the area. All with additional needs and that can be a really difficult thing for us to manage. And obviously, the uh, the additional learning needs and tribunal. Bill has now become an act, that's what we're around, um, and it's been passed with royal assent. So there's a whole set of changes coming down the line that we have to change our practice on to recognise. In terms of school reform and development, um, we have a challenging Welsh and education strategic plan. We're still in conversation with our Welsh medium forum around that and with Welsh Government. And implementing that and achieving that will be a challenge. Um, the remaining five, six and seven there pick up the work that we're doing. There's a hugely significant capital investment we've made in Caldercot and in um. And Monmouth in terms of twenty-first century schools, but also recognise that we've got a significant area of risk presenting. With the changes we want to make in Avogadveni. Um, and those risks are in terms of making sure that the schools are ready to become a through school, um, a three through nineteen. To make sure that the site is de-risked and there are no horrible hidden surprises when we begin work, all of those types of things. So there are risks remaining there. It would be remiss of me um not to mention um the financial pressures, well articulated in this committee and in full council. Um, we know that the budget positions in our schools are challenging. Um, we know that there's a reduction in the education improvement grant, the E I G this year, that will potentially have an impact on our schools. Um, that's a Welsh government decision, equally, some Welsh government decisions have gone the other way for us this year. So for instance, in our post-sixteen grant, um, there was a reduction in the post-sixteen grant across Wales overall of just over six million pounds. Uh, Monmouthshire experienced growth of a hundred thousand pounds, so for the first time. Um, so fantastic for our secondaries, the E I G is a real concern for our primary schools. Um, we've also got this position whereby um we have um a collective deficit across our schools. Um, our schools are working very hard to bring that collective deficit down. Um, but um given the pressures that we see in the future. There is the risk that that collective deficit might grow and some schools might experience um growth in that area. Um, broader areas, um, and there's one which I've negated to, to put on, which I should have done. So staff wellbeing, I alluded to earlier, about making sure that our staff are well and able to go and teach to the best of their ability. Preparedness for the new curriculum should be a risk for every single education authority, I think, across Wales. We need this to retain, and I think that the evidence has been clear this morning, retain a focus on free school meal learners. Um, we need to continue to improve delivery for all of our learners. And we need to think about um population development and growth across the county. And what that means that we've got suitable school places and that sustainability, that goes back to that outer ring around sustainable provision. And the one which I've overlooked um to include there is clearly around exclusions and us reducing the number of exclusions in the next year. So I'll add that one in by, by the time this goes to council. So in terms of areas for focus um for the next year, um, it's on the next two slides. And what I've tried to do is to say where we'll focus our work, I've tried to identify the driver for change. I've tried to link it to a risk on that risk sheet that we've just had and I've tried to identify how we'll know we've been successful. So on the first page there, there's the piece around um concluding the work in Monmouth, that's a, a clear one for us. Um, we've got this ongoing, we have to have, it's our kind of moral duty to have an ongoing focus on learners who are vulnerable. Be that through F S M, not having English as their first language or just being vulnerable in terms of their position. Um, we need to continue to raise standards across the piece and that's a, a given, I think. Um, and we need to review and refresh our leadership structures, going back to this piece around federation. We also need to implement the findings of the A L N review. Um, we need to review the catchment and nearest school policy. That's because we've got some quirks in some of our areas which are kind of driving some unfortunate outcomes. In terms of where children are able to attend school and so on. Um, and we need to think again about how we move our children from home to school. And that's a really important one for us, not only because of their financial pressures. Um, but because of the way that our population is developing, we've seen new housing developments and so on. Um, but also because there's a new policy agenda which is around active travel and about sustainability into the future. So that's a key point there. That concludes uh the. That concludes the chief officer's report. I'd obviously be happy to take any questions or suggestions for tweaks and changes and yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you very much indeed. I think the entire committee will have appreciated the effort that's gone into that so far. In terms of our ability to question, we of course have only just seen this. We will have seen much of the document, much of the data around key stage four and five. And I would ask that we don't ask those questions now because that's the next agenda item. So if there are questions specifically around performance at key stage four and five, there's a better place to ask those. But generally, are there any questions on where we are so far? Bearing in mind that Mr McLean has literally only just finished writing this. councillor Powell.
Yes, with the exclusions, they do always put days lost exclusions. Now, very often, it's not many actual pupils. It's similar pupils being excluded time and time again. And do you think that if the number of pupils was put as well as the days, it would be given a better look onto things, not meaning that half the school are being excluded? Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, that's absolutely.
That was the one question. And the other one was, it comes back to the free school meals. Because we've got such, we're a smaller number of free school meals in our schools. Do you feel that that isn't always taken into consideration when compared to other schools? Or do you think that because it's a smaller number, we don't have the amount of employees to deal with them as you would if you had a lot of free school meal children? Do you think that that can have anything to do with that? Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Powell. With regards to your first question, the way that we've reported the exclusions is the total number of days lost and then the rate of fixed term exclusions per thousand pupils. So we have tried to capture that there. In terms of the FSM, I think the way in which our comparative, the way in which we are compared to other schools means that we are comparing ourselves to other similar schools. So for our schools, you know, if we take Monmouth comprehensive, for instance, it will be compared to places which you would think would, it should be compared to. So places like Stanwell in Penarth, Crickowal, Baysleg, that type of school. And then, so that kind of makes that a fair comparison, I think, in terms of what do they achieve and so on. And that's, that's critical there. I think the one point, I think there is something in terms of your point around the, the ability to support children with free school meals. And I think that, as I said, when we have a small cohort, it's absolutely right and we should expect that progress leaders and so on know children's names, they know where they are, what they're doing and so on. I think what can work against us sometimes is if you were, and Sarah certainly in the, where Sarah used to be a head in Abergaveni. If you were, if that area was part of a bigger area of deprivation, you would find there was significant support from Welsh government in terms of communities first, other societal interventions that would actually help support those children. And it comes back to that point I was making earlier about what we have is a very, an area of absolute deprivation. I would never question that in terms of the challenges that both in North Abergaveni and in Thornwell, for instance, as well, similar area, absolute huge challenges. But what we don't have then is the, the number, the quantum that actually then triggers some additional support. And that is a challenge. It also means things like the pupil development grant, which is intended to support free school meal learners. We receive, you know, a lower amount of that and so that doesn't go as far. You don't get to a critical level that you can then buy certain types of intervention. So I think that's a fair point, but the fundamental point for me is we know who they are. We know who they are from a very young age and we should be doing better with them.
Yes, vice chair.
Can I just, just a quick question on that? When it comes to Monmouth comprehensive school, obviously you've got a large intake from the Forest of Dean. So you've got, we might as Monmouth in primary schools be doing very well with, with our free school meal children. And then when you get to comprehensive, you've got this intake of people that we haven't been able to affect in any way. How does that impact on statistics and how you see yourself progressing and measure it?
Okay, there's, I think there are two parts with regards to Monmouth. The first is that those children who come over from England, we still know if they're in free, received a free school meals. So that doesn't change, that doesn't become hidden because they've come from England. So Monmouth's FSM figure is, I think, around 7%. So it's still very low even with that influx. Where it does cause an issue for Monmouth is with regard to those modelled expectations. Because the modelled expectations are done on a matched cohort basis. So the modelled expectation is done from the number of pupils who we know in one half of the model and extrapolate from that cohort. So for Monmouth, there might be a third of pupils who are not in that match cohort. So then to say, you know, we've matched a cohort of very able children who've come from the Monmouth area and suddenly there's a group of children who've come in and have distorted that. My conversations with the head teacher over the last year though, have been very clearly that we will be having a discussion about the match cohort. They know who the children are and if they're not reaching the standards which the match cohort say they should, then that's an area for a further development and understanding. But it is an issue in the same way, you know, in the south of the county, we've got children going to England. It's just one of those, but it is something more unique to Monmouth in terms of that. You know, I think it's roughly 30% come in.
On that, surely the statistics, all statistics are pretty hard to, to look at because the, you've got people, for example, in Usk going to Clean Comprehensive School and you've got people in Northa County going to Crickowal. You've got people coming in from Forest of Dean to Monmouth. I mean, you can't really, I know you said to talk about it later, but comparing primary school, key stage two to key stage four and projecting, saying what the projective outcomes would be with the thinking that the same students are going to go on to the, to, Monmouthshire students are going to go on to Monmouthshire comprehensive schools. It's just not happening, is it? Because we're losing them and we're gaining them, new pupils. And it's, it's hard to read. Sorry, I'm not being very clear this morning. I've early my son's birthday, so it's my excuse. But do you see where I'm coming from? It's, I don't know how, I don't, it must be an absolute nightmare for you to sort of predict what's going to happen because the same pupils aren't in both statistics.
The same pupils, sorry, the same pupils are.
There's no continuation.
So it depends, so if your child, so every pupil in Wales has a unique reference number. So you know that child and then you, they get allocated to the right secondary school. So in a sense, so if you're, so if a child goes to Usk and his reference number X001, when they go to Caley and they take X001 with them. So we're not distorting in that way. So it is a true matched cohort. So the secondary school, they will have, if a child has been through the Welsh system at primary school, they know what they've achieved previously and that the right information is in the model at that stage.
Are you, are the statistics not perhaps as good as they would be because?
The risk with it, the, the risk with it is that key stage two is teacher assessed. That's the risk. So you could have for a school, you know, overinflate its key stage two outcomes because of, and we verify that through a whole range of measures such as making sure that there's a broad correlation between national tests and teacher assessments. So you could have a position whereby you've inflated key stage two outcomes, which makes it harder then for the secondary schools to achieve the outcomes with that modelled expectation. Equally, arguably, you know, there are some authorities where it's said that they depress their key stage two outcomes and then their key stage four looks like they've added huge amounts of value to the child. So, you know, there, there are things you can do. I think you can as well take, there are modelled expectations from key stage three as well. So I think, but I think it would be very remiss of us not to think that they have a value nor that they are here to stay, because I think that's really important. And they will become an important part of currency in terms of how we identify where schools are and what they're doing.
If I may, just quickly just say congratulations on what you're achieving because I think the statistics are very positive, particularly in the primary sector on, on the direction we're going in Monmouthshire. So well done to you and the executive member.
Any further kinds of questions? Mr Fowler.
Firstly, thank you for a very comprehensive report. It's, it's well laid out and very easy to understand. And even having not seen it pre-meeting, it's very easy to follow. A few points, I, I'm buoyed to see that the review of catchments kind of on the high priorities. Is that a pledge to get more Monmouthshire children educated within county? Is it trying to realign the oddities? That's, that's my first one. Then totally unrelated, again, looking at the quality of the report. I was, I liked seeing the cohort sizes in the FSM at the key stage four. And that challenged my perception really, to see that Monmouth had the biggest cohort of, of FSM pupils was surprising and to see King Henry with the least. It, it kind of challenged my perceptions of what I thought was true. So I, I appreciate that level of reporting and that extra layer in the data. And then finally, just a curiosity, have the schools that have had the new inspections, have those published yet or is it still in, in the thing? It's just be interested to see for schools to take some learning away from what's happening in those new inspections.
Okay, with regards to the first one, I think the review of the catchment areas is because, I think, it's my belief absolutely, and I know councillor John, we've spent a long time discussing it, that our children should come to our schools. That's really important. And, you know, it's, they should go to the schools where they live, near their community and so on. That's a really, really important part for us. I don't like losing children to other places. I don't think the rationale often is, is the right rationale for those choices, but there clearly will be parental choice. And it's not something as well, I think, be very clear, we can't turn it off overnight because things like admissions policy, which have sibling rankings in them, take a little while to unwind and so on. I think the important part is that I want the parents to recognise that our schools are as good as, and if not better than anywhere else they might be thinking about sending their children. And that's really fundamental. So that's what's driving some of that. So I don't, I think there is, on the Usk and Caleyen one, I think there is, it's a kind of a historic reciprocal arrangement. So us children tended to go to Caleyen and Clan Martin went to Caldecott and that was a kind of a, an equal deal at the time. I don't think that's an equal deal anymore. So I think we'll be, you know, we want us children to, to stay in county and that normally probably means Monmouth, but depending on where they live, then actually accessing King Henry through the kind of the Goitra feeder school route would also be positive as well then. So I think it's about keeping children in county. With regards to the cohort, I mean, clearly Monmouth is the biggest school by a significant distance. So it will have a, a big, a number of children, but it is interesting to see it. So we'll always try and make sure that we identify the number of children because I think that does help. And I know councillor Harris always raises that when I forget to do it normally. And with regards to the schools, of the three, two have been published. Chepstow Comprehensive was the first one and has been published. Ossola Finn was the first primary school, which is obviously a Welsh medium school, has been published. And the third school was Durand and hasn't been published yet. So that's where we are in terms of that. So they're all available on the ESTIN website if people want to have a look at those and, and just see what, how they look and feel differently to obviously the way that Raglan was inspected last.
Okay, councillor Powell.
Over this last 12 months, 18 months or so, there's been alteration in some parents not having free school meals, but having a different type of credit. Now, will they be still counted as free school meal children or not? Because if they're not, there may be quite a number of children who would in the past be free school meals but are now having this credit instead and it takes them out of it. And then you've got the parents that are too proud to claim.
I am aware that there is, and I think we've commissioned some work from our benefits teams across the region to look at that because I'm aware that there's a, an issue around when you gain one benefit, that's FSM can be one of the ones you lose in terms of that. I think though, we're seeing falling numbers of FSM children all across Wales. So I think the pattern is a downwards one. I think I'm right in saying, I think they've just decided now that the pupil development grant will be available for children who've been FSM in the last two years. So that gives you a bit more scope, but of course, they didn't change the amount of money that's gone into it. In England, the model is very different. It's ever FSM and if you've ever been FSM, you're eligible for that support, which recognises that kind of cusp nature of FSM in people's lives. So it's a, it's an important point to note. It also an important point because it, in the best will in the world, it means that some of our schools will experience a different group of schools to compare themselves against. So exactly what happened to Caldecott this year.
Thanks. On the catchment issue, councillor John, a cabinet member would like to say a few words.
Thank you. I just wanted to come in following the, the really, really excellent point that, that Mr Fowler made about catchment areas. And it's also related to what councillor Jones was saying a few minutes ago and that we've seen children go through our primary school system and we're achieving some excellent results, particularly at the foundation phase and key stage two. And then it's such a shame really that we are losing a lot of those students at the end of key stage two and they're going on to secondary school elsewhere. And not because, I suppose in a way, we might be inflating results at schools out of county, but because it's, this is the home of our students. And we, we feel that it would be a great benefit to the future of Monmouthshire if students who've studied here, have gone through our school system, have made their friendships here. They, they may well be more likely to stay in Monmouthshire and contribute to our economy in the future. We've talked about new economies that are, that are growing in, in highly skilled industries, particularly in, in the south of the county. And having seen our children go through the school system, it'd be such a shame to see them build those bonds and community ties elsewhere. And that's, that's not what, what, what we want. So we recognise that a catchment review would be difficult. It would be challenging, it would take time for changes to bed in. It would involve significant changes in terms of transport, but we feel it's something that's worth doing. So that's why, why we're pursuing it. And I imagine it may be discussed a little bit further on Thursday when we talk about the corporate plan.
Yeah, thank you very much indeed. Councillor Watkins.
Thank you. I'll leave anything ALN related until we actually talk about the inclusion report later on. But I'm, I am quite interested in the federation model for, for working. And I was speaking to a governor in the Chepstow cluster and he was talking about the great leadership that they felt in that cluster from one of those particular heads and how, how great it was that she'd been able to go and get extra grants from Welsh Gov as well, which actually enabled them to do things within the cluster. What are our actual steps towards walking, working towards this? Because obviously some heads have got better business skills than some of the others. And it might just be, it would be, what are actual, what's our progress towards that? And how are we going to work in that direction?
Okay, the model in Chepstow is a really interesting model in the sense that they've taken one of their substantive heads and she now works in a number of different ways. She retains some work within the school. She also works across the cluster and then she does work for the AS as a partner challenge advisor. It's an interesting model because it's not actually a federation in that sense. A federation in its purest sense would be simply that, and Welsh government guidance allows this to happen, that two schools in essence come together through the merger of their governing bodies. It has some significant benefits because it means that the schools can retain their own identity. They can retain their own uniform, their, their, their place where the school is and so on. But normally what it comes with is the benefit of having a shared strategic leadership and a shared headship and potentially a shared leadership model across the two, the, the schools. We have seen in the region some radical and aggressive federations of schools. I think we're probably waiting to see the benefits come through fully from where they've taken place. So for instance, in, I'm only looking at Sarah because it's in Blaine and Gwent. They've aggressively, I would say, federated primary schools and secondary schools to create through schools in Abertillery and Ebbavower.
But they've actually closed schools and made new schools, opened new schools, so they're not a federation.
No, but they, they come together, yeah. So what I've spoken to head teachers about is the fact that in a evolutionary process, I would like to see fewer head teachers in the future than we have at the moment. So what that means in essence is when the opportunity presents itself, we will always look in the first instance for shared leadership across. look in the first instance for shared leadership across our schools. That might be a stage process whereby heads come together or schools come together, then we, we then recruit a single head teacher to a number of schools. So that's the pattern that we, we're hoping to take forward in the future. There are probably two or three, obvious reasons I won't name them, two or three at the moment which are kind of in play and could potentially be federations in the future. But that's the pattern we want to see it go along as. Okay.
Can I just build on, on that point? I do note what you say about the, the close work and although it's not a federation, I think that model is something the E A S and, and L A probably would encourage because I know the good work that's gone on in that particular cluster. And that's about heads working together, sharing that expertise. And you really then see the, the impact on the provision and on the outcomes too. So although it's not a federation, it's a good model.
Yeah, absolutely. Councillor John.
Thank you, Chair. I agree. I, I think that model's worked, worked really well. I visited, I did separate visits to Pembroke Primary and Thornwell Primary Schools last week and I was really impressed with what I've heard and we've seen how it's helping drive up standards. You know, Thornwell School, I think we can be honest, was facing some, some challenges about five years ago and just a couple of weeks ago has been put into green status. So that's the sort of journey that, and I, I think that, that strong relationship between those schools and the, the strong, the strong leadership there has had a real beneficial impact in, in Thornwell. But for me, the, the discussion about, about federations comes down to leadership and I've, I try to visit as many schools as I can and it's, it's no coincidence that many of our best performing schools have got really strong leadership in them. And I think there's, there's a debate about how we keep the most talented and most successful head teachers in Monmouthshire and how we ensure that there is continued career progression for, for our best head teachers. We've, we've seen the, the impact that many of those head teachers have had on their staffing, on students. And I think there's a real concern that we, we don't want to lose the best and we also want to drive up standards across the board. So it's, it's a question of how we do that. Now, my, personally, my experience of whole scale structural change or aggressive change is that it can actually, it can sometimes be a negative and can sometimes change everyone's attention from the drive to continue to raise standards to everyone talks about the structures and, and the actual change for a couple of years. So it's something we would be looking at incrementally where opportunities arise, but it's, it's something where, that is under active consideration at the moment.
Any further comments? Councillor Woodhouse.
Thank you, Chair. If I could say how interesting and what a lot of detail for a relatively new councillor, it's been very interesting to hear the chief officer. Thank you for all the explanation of all the schools in Monmouthshire. With regard to the free school meals, I, I do get very concerned. I know this is an issue that's probably been looked at in great depth and it's ongoing and looking forward. I would like to be more in the picture of, it, it sounded a bit confusing when we were talking about the different benefits and the, and the, the sort of opportunities for people to claim their free school meals. Is it something we could look at as a select committee to, to sort of consider the, the process? It may have been done in the past, but obviously things are changing. And I, as a new councillor said, it would be, I would find that particularly useful to find out where we are with that process. And my other sort of interest, we've got the Eston framework, you mentioned the new Eston framework, we've got that on our forward planner. So I look forward to that being, coming to select. And also the Donaldson report is another area which I, I don't feel I've got myself, I've got a good understanding of. Would that be something that we would all benefit from looking at in the future? Thank you.
I, I think there's a very quick and obvious answer to your questions and that it's yes. Yeah, I, I, I think you, you've raised a couple of very important points there and it would be good for all of us, not just new members of the council, I think. Because I, I think particularly, we're going to come back to it as the morning progresses, the free school meals issue is, I would say, one of the most central issues to educational underachievement where it exists. And maybe to my professional background, but, but I always look at the underachievement rather than where we're doing particularly well. Because where there is underachievement, we are failing children. That's the bottom line. And so yes, I think that you, you've raised something very important there councillor Woodhouse and thank you very much indeed. We will guarantee that it does come back to us. Before we move on, are there any other comments or questions? Well, you, you've heard the praise there for your report, Mr McLean. Thank you very much indeed. We look forward to seeing it progress on towards council. If we could move on then to the next agenda item, which is number five. And that's a report that you have received separately from the main bundle, so I hope you've all got that. And it's the key stage four and five outcomes.
Thank you, Chair. I'm afraid it's me again. Sharon would normally present this, but Sharon, I'm afraid is not able to be in work today. So if I'll just take us through this, if that's okay. Obviously, this has been put together, the front paper by ourselves, but the, the supporting paper has been put together by the, the A S, which is part of the end of that partnership working that we have. So the, the, the purpose of this report is to consider the final outcomes for key stages four and five for the academic year 2016-17. And it's recommended that, that scrutiny receive the report and scrutinise the information that's within it and think about any issues that need to be reflected upon us as C Y P or the A S in terms of the outcomes. I think much of this is what we would have reflected upon already this morning, I think. In terms of the, the key issues at key stage four, I think we've discussed already, you know, there have been really significant changes in the past year and that means that comparative analysis is difficult. But the second point there is that, you know, we have seen this consistency in the, the level two threshold, including English and maths between 16 and 17. We're above the national average on all of our indicators. In the level two indicator, which is five good G C S Es, then we have declined, there has been a, it's quite a significant fall away. But that mirrors a fall away across the rest of Wales and the fall away across the rest of Wales was more significant than it was in Monmouthshire. The one which I think personally I, has caused me more difficulty in terms of understanding and in terms of councillor Grokert's comment around underachievement is the performance in the level one threshold. Level one is five G C S Es in the full range, which is A star to G as opposed to C. That's the one where you normally get to see in Monmouthshire certainly, a very, very broad set of achievement across the piece where people, you know, who might not be able to access the A star to C are actually accessing qualifications. So to see that the decline in Monmouthshire being greater than the rest of the decline across Wales is a concern for me. And as well, you know, being ranked 14th in Wales is, is not a good position for us to be in. So the level one threshold is a concern. Cap nine is significantly above the national average and we were placed third in Wales. That's the first year of that indicator, I did allude to that in my kind of report, that this is going to be a really important one going forward. And just in terms of some of the subject specifics, in terms of English and science, we've saw lower outcomes in 2017 than previous years, albeit above the national average. Science is moving, so this will be the first year in which science, the only science qualifications that count in the new accountability framework will be G C S E sciences. In the past, we've seen G C S E, sorry, in the past, we've seen science outcomes significantly supported by the use of B text. So we were having the exact discussion last night at a, one of our comprehensives and you know, they're probably moving position whereby they would probably normally expect 80%, I'd have said, passing science through the use of B text down to probably high 30s or 40 through G C S Es. Really, really significant change in assessment. And a lot of that is because of the, the, the nature of the change in the way that science is taught from foundation phase through to key stage two, to key stage three, and then suddenly into key stage four is a real challenge. So that's an important one for us to be aware of the, the science. Maths really strong in both numeracy and in mathematics and buck the trend that we saw across Wales, but we did better in 2017 than we had in 16. And again, I've talked a little bit about the five A star As and we were above the Welsh average for that for the first time in five years. So I think that's really positive. A little bit there on the, the gender gap, it's narrowed now to 4.9% in favour of girls. I think that's largely down to the boys in Chepstow having unbelievably good summer last year. But that's really positive for us to see because that has been an area of challenge. But you know, being very serious about it, the F S M gap has widened for the level two threshold again. And, and that's a very kind of area of significant concern for us. The Welsh Government model expectation shows an improving trend. That's when we take it at a county level. So again, that's another quirk of some statistics. It looks better at a county level than it does at individual school level. With regards to key stage five, key stage five is difficult and the reason it doesn't come here in such the same amount of detail as it does at key stage four and so on, is that it's a self-selecting cohort. We offer a certain range of subjects in our schools. It's not, it's not a huge amount of breadth. There are children who will choose to go to college and so on. So it's, it's a much more kind of, it's much more discreet cohort of pupils, I think it would be fair to say. So we don't normally report key stage five in the same level of detail, although, and one of the reasons for that has been in the past, that the level three threshold, which is two A levels or equivalents, grades A star to E, is never really felt like the kind of indicator that you'd want to use to measure success in your schools. It's quite a low base in terms of it. So we've tended to talk and when we collected data this year, locally, we were looking at the number of children getting three, the three A levels that they were expecting and those children who were, who were able to access the higher education or future learning that they wanted to because of their A level outcomes. But I understand that there are changes to the key stage five accountability framework introduced this summer.
Yes, 1819, there will be new performance.
Yeah, indeed, 1819. So that's there. So you can see that we've dropped a little bit in terms of our level three threshold, which is disappointing and didn't compare as well locally or regionally or nationally. So there are some areas around that. We've begun, going back again to councillor Watkins's comments around federation, we've begun to have a much more purposeful conversation with our four secondary schools around joint working for A level provision. The heads are a part of that conversation, which is really positive for the first time. And at the beginning, the end of January, we had an invite to all governors across the four secondary schools and I presented to them what our views were about greater collaboration post 16 in the future. And we had an okay turnout. I think it was fair to say about 25 governors came from across the four schools to hear about those prospects in the future. So the, the one thing, in terms of the reading or the reasons on paragraph four, it says to provide members with a timely data. It never feels very timely because these results came out last August, but it is due to the way it takes so long for the statistical verification to be done and for all of the comparative work to be undertaken. And it gets released just about at the end of December every year. And this was the most appropriate meeting for us to bring it to. So on to the detail. And again, much of this you will have seen and heard me talk about previously. You can see there the table, which is at the bottom of the first page of the analysis. You can see that again, that we're on the extreme left-hand side, the yellow bar is 67%. So we've got the lowest level of entitlement, but clearly we're the highest performing as well, which is the correlation you would want and expect to see. That's at the level two inclusive. If we just carry on down there, hang on a second, just lost the mouse thing altogether. Don't know what's going on. Right, okay. Sorry, my IT issue a second. If you've got that. Thank you. Yeah, so you can see there that we are on that left-hand side and that's the right correlation. Performance against targets, we were close to targets. I mean, I think suggesting five percentage points of their June estimate is, you know, I think we'd be looking for a little bit more proximity to a target than five percentage points at that stage. We take data from the four secondary schools at three points in the year, at December, at March and at June, and we see their, their progression towards their expected outcomes. So they've set a target and we measure. So we were, we were relatively close. It was a difficult year in terms of predictions because of the, the change in examinations. In terms of the, there's some data there which you'll pick, which we've described earlier today as well. So the key one there again really is that our total population remained at 67, but that F S M, non F S M gap went from 41.2 to 43.7. So a widening of that gap, which is problematic. I've talked again in terms of the covering report about the indicators, they're simply replicated there in graph form. So you can see we have declined but remained above the Welsh average. And you can see that we're significantly above the Welsh average position in terms of the cap nine as well, which is really positive for us as we go forward. Maths and an increase in the five A star As is really important for us. Maths, the introduction of numeracy, again, nobody knew how that was going to go through, how that was going to play out. But again, we've done very well in terms of the mathematics, best of both. And English, English is a really interesting one at the moment. It's the subject where there's the greatest level of volatility. But interestingly, it's the subject where there's the greatest level of volatility and churn in terms of staffing in schools. It's the most recruited to post in Welsh secondaries. Being head of English is an enviable task, I think. So there are clear challenges there in terms of securing that English and it's normally the one which we see volatility in. So if we look back to 2016, the school that fell away and didn't allow us to break 70% was Chepstow and that was their English. This summer just gone, the school that fell away and didn't allow us to break the 70% was King Henry and that was their English. So it's the English one which seems to be the issue. But in other schools, we've seen real strength in our English. So if we just keep going down the top of the next page, picks up on the gender differentials. So we've talked about the gap narrowing, which is very positive for us. The gap's now narrower in Monmouthshire than it is across Wales. And again, we've seen girls' performance decline slightly, but the, the boys has improved. So I think that's been the key reason for that. And again, there's a table of information there. The F S M, I don't, I'm not going to repeat what we've all talked about significantly this morning, but it's an area of concern for us and a real focus. We can't be 11 points, percentage points adrift of the Welsh position in terms of the F S M gap. In terms of our ranking, you can see that a good year, in a sense that we went back up to first position in terms of level two inclusive, we're second in terms of level two, 14th, which is that one I identified earlier, which is a real risk around level one, third cap point nine and first for English, maths, but then eighth for science. So there are areas that we clearly do need to, to, to work and focus on. And those are the areas which we're discussing with our schools when we go and meet them There's then a block then on individual schools. I don't need to go that into detail with you. I think the, the bottom line last year was that King Henry didn't achieve as well as we would have hoped. I think the, the point about the comparative nature of the schools, if you look at the individual schools and if you look at the first table and the percentage level two, English, Welsh or maths, or sorry, English or Welsh and maths, you can see there that King Henry, despite falling by nearly 10%, are still above the median. That's because they're in the second F S M group. So if they were in the first one, as Caldercot were, Caldercot outperformed King Henry by four percentage points, but are in, below the median and in the, the third quartile group. So that's how that comparative piece works. We then show the benchmarks again, which we've shown you earlier this morning already. And then hit on the model expectation work again. So you can see there, in terms of the, the local authority benchmarks for performance, we've done better. So our actual for level two inclusive was 68.8. Our target was 65.6. Our target was 65.6, so we achieved that. But there's this distortion between the authority level and the school level, and that's what we've just got to work through. Then move on to key stage five. You can see there that all of the areas, Monmouthshire, South East Wales and Wales, all fell on the level three threshold. But our four was greater than both South East Wales and Wales on a similar sized cohort as well. Because sometimes there are cohort changes of greater magnitude than just simply the two that there was between 16 and 17. And it just takes you then into the key stage four. And that is a more individual level quartile analysis, depending on whichever indicators are applicable. So that takes through our four schools. I don't think there's anything else I really need to add to that. I think we've been through them earlier today and previously as well. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr McLean. I have to say you've stolen much of my thunder about free school meal performance. It clearly is, it's just a recurring theme as the morning has gone on, isn't it? And I think the fact that it is clearly recognised, that doesn't make it better. It means that we know what we've got to do. And it'll be interesting in 12 months down the line to see the progress that we've made. I think you alluded earlier this morning to the research that suggests where it's not only free school meals, it's a range of disabilities, but where you've got a very small number in a huge cohort. It's very difficult to actually address the needs as effectively. And just to digress for a moment, I arrived in Wales to take up the post of head of upper school in Tradega Comp. Just at the time when they closed the last coal mine, they were dramatically reducing the numbers of steel workers in Ebbavale. And all of a sudden, you just saw the impact of that on the school. And looking at our four secondary schools in Monmouthshire, there is just no comparison between the positive outlooks of those schools and the way it felt to work in Tradega in 1986. We are, I think, in a position where we can go forward. We've identified what we need to do. And I'm looking very hard at the people in front of me saying, let's go for it. And in a year's time, let's see the progress that we've made. Colleagues, comments, questions? Mr Fowler?
Just a quick question really, because I know we tore the non-verified results apart quite extensively last time. Was there much variance from the non-verified results to this set that we've got?
councillor Watkins?
Thank you. I'm interested in what you said about science and the fact that a lot of our children have been taking BTEC science as opposed to GCSE. I'm assuming the schools were doing BTEC science because they felt this was more appropriate for their students. And I am now concerned that are those students going to be pushed to do a GCSE when that's not appropriate for them? Because otherwise our statistics look bad. What's actually going to happen with relation to the BTEC, GCSE and the science thing? What are we going to be doing about it in general? What policy do we have?
Okay, this is a really complicated one because, as you've just indicated, statistically, BTEC will not show up on schools' data. Schools are often driven by moral purpose rather than statistical purpose. So I think that's a caveat that you must be aware of. There are a number of science options. Obviously, there are the single sciences where you do the three. There's double science. There's also applied science, which is far, far more challenging than BTEC, but has a, I think it's a 30% practical element to it. And it was the coursework and the practical element of BTEC that was best suited, probably to our most disadvantaged learners. So I think you've just got to be aware that decisions around what is best for learners will be taken at school level and that will come out in the possible decline of performance.
Any other comments or questions? Early in that case, Mr McLean, thank you again. And also a thank you for, sorry, councillor John?
Sorry, I just wanted to come in on the free school meals discussion because I know this is something that you've discussed at length in this committee, quite rightly. And for me, the free school meals figures are really important because it's about how do we measure poverty? And we know that we've got, while we're generally an affluent county, we know we've got pockets of poverty, particularly in parts of Aberguvenny, in Bulwark. And at the moment, we've got too many children who enter the school system from a deprived background. And we've got too many of them then leaving the school system, either with no qualifications or with poor qualifications, meaning that they're less likely to go on and get good jobs. They're more likely to have children that then they raise who will enter the school system from a deprived background. So it's about how do we break that generational cycle of poverty? Admittedly, we've only got it in pockets in our communities, but how do we break that? And I think education is the way to do it. When you've got a child going through the school system, that's your opportunity to break that cycle of poverty in those communities. And clearly, we're not doing enough to break that cycle at the moment. I think that is, that's the opportunity there. And clearly, these figures show that we're not doing enough to break that. And while I think that the figures are particularly strong at the foundation phase and at key stage two, the gap particularly at key stage four is far too wide. And I recognise, and I've discussed this with head teachers, about the significant challenges they've got in their schools, about how they identify free school meals children, particularly because some of these cohorts, we're talking about very, very small numbers of children, 10 in King Henry last year. And also about the changing eligibility criteria. You can, just because a child is eligible for free school meals in one year, doesn't mean that a few months later, they may still be eligible for free school meals. We've also talked about the challenges in terms of the education improvement grant and the pressures that that's going to, the reduction in funding could put on some schools. Because often it's that extra intervention that helps free school meals children. And if it's that extra intervention that goes as a result of budgetary pressures, that's going to make tackling that gap in outcomes for free school meals even more difficult. So can I thank you for your scrutiny and your discussions about this? Because you're right to focus on this area. It's an area where we're not doing well enough at the moment and we need to improve.
Thank you for those comments. I think as a committee, we have clearly focused on the effects of deprivation on outcomes for our children. But I would also make a point that looking forward, and you're quite right, we've got to somehow break the cycle of poverty. And I think there's a key role here for us as part of the wellbeing and future generations commitments. And at our last meeting, I think Mr McLean made a very positive comment to help us on our way when we were, if you think back, looking at the presentation by the youth service. And how there was a block there with the health authorities on actually being able to measure the progress as a result of interventions made for our young people. And Mr McLean saying, well, this is an area we can take to the public service board and try to pull together. Because it is very clear, isn't it, that it is all professionals coming together that will break that cycle, not teachers or councillors, probably certainly not councillors, but professionals with all their commitment and all their knowledge. And in the past, at times, we have not sung from the same hymn sheet. And so, for example, in my own ward, which is one of those that's just been alluded to as an area of deprivation in the county. Sad to say, we lost our head teacher from our excellent Green primary school, but she's gone on to greater things and is sat with us this morning. But also in terms of that first area of highlight for the public service board, giving every child the best possible start in life. It's great to see that in my ward, social services coming together to support a community project that's got close links with the school. We've got other agencies using that project as a base for work that they want to do. So we've got citizens' advice coming in. We've got housing associations giving support to young people in specific projects. Now, it seems to me that, yes, we are clearly focused here on education outcomes this morning. I think our cabinet member has made a very important point. And just to say it again, teachers are not the people alone to break that cycle of poverty. And let's hope that the Welsh Government's vision for how it can bring together professional agencies is the best bet and the best hope for the future. Because it's been like this for over a century and it's predictable. And we need to be able to break that cycle because previous generations have failed to break that cycle, even though we've talked about it. So it's an exciting time to be a local councillor, I think. Any further comments on this particular agenda item before we move forward? Well, at this point then, we are going to go into committee. And so if we could turn off the live screening and if I could thank our colleagues from EAS, and much as we'd love to keep you in our conversations, then we've reached a point where we have to become...